Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to the March 13th, 2025 Regular Work Session of the Blackhawk School Board of Directors. At this time, would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam, would you please call roll?
Sure thing. Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Huziak?
Here.
Dr. McCosey?
Here.
Mrs. Mansell?
Here.
Mr. Shoup?
Here.
Dr. Springer?
Here.
I am here.
Mr. Wisner?
And Mr. Zakowitz?
Here.
We have eight minutes.
Thank you. There was an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, safety, and legal matters. 1.5 Solicitors Report.
I don't have a report. I do not have a report, but I would like to just remind board members that the statements of financial interest are due to be turned in by May 1st, so if you have any questions or problems with those, please tell me.
The ones that I just turned in?
That was from the previous year, I believe?
The ones that are due are for 2024. So I'm not sure what one you just turned in.
Many of us had to resubmit 2023.
Is that still? Could I just turn it in?
You're talking about if you turn it in for the election?
Yeah.
Then I think if I remember correctly, it is fine, because he would have turned them in for the election.
It depends on whether you s- these ones need to be selected that you are a board member, so if you did ones part of the-
Well, I remember I had X2 spots that were sinking out.
Okay. Okay, then it likely is good.
I tried one here.
Thanks, everyone. We're going to move on now to number two Administrators and Superintendent Update. So 2.1 is our Winter Sports Update.
So Mr. Rigio is not present this evening, so I have the pleasure of giving a Winter Sports Update. Do you want to go first? Because I'm going to make a wager that you have stuff in here and I don't want to steal your thunder. Oh, okay. I'm sure, okay. So, um, girls' basketball finished runner-up in the WPIA playoff after a tough loss to Oakland Catholic. They have advanced to the quarterfinals of the PIAA playoffs with a game Saturday at Hampton against North Catholic. Overall record of 25-3 on the season. Aubrey Hup, 1,000-point scorer. Boys' basketball? Yep. Great season, ladies and so gentlemen. Um, boys' basketball finished the season with an overall record of 7-13 in a very tough 5A section. Tyler Heckethorn became a 1,000-point scorer. Bowling, boys' team made it to the WPIBL Championship. Finished 22nd. Michael Popovich, Carmen Martella, Austin Simmons, and George Saranick were also individual qualifying qualifiers. Michael Popovich finished second in the division. Girls' team finished 15th in the WPIBL Championships. Peyton Kimberlin, Lucy Hook, and Julia Novak were individual qualifiers. Peyton finished second in the division and 50th overall. Swimming, PIAA qualifiers, Abby Tweed, 100 freestyle school record and 200 freestyle made consolidations at PIAA and placed 13th overall. Caleb Phillips, 50 freestyle, 200 free relay, and 400 free relay. Si Morgan, 200 free and 400 free. Tyler Tript, 200 free, Jack Hannan, 200 free and 400, and Max Vogel, 400. All of those, obviously, big state qualifiers, so congratulations to swimming. Boys, 200 free, also got 12 overall. Wrestling, Nate Reed qualified for Woodview. Bachi gone to States, won regionals on March 11th and headed to the state championships on March 27th in Hershey. Also, the athletic office developed a new coaching closeout interview process with head coaches as well as having the coaches evaluate their assistance. New coaching handbook has been adopted as well as procedures for those coaches. They'll be sending out a fall athletes, or I'm sorry, winter athletes survey asking for thoughts on the season. And that's about it for the Winter Sports Update.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Yay!
Thanks. All right.
Is this on?
Is this one good? Does it sound like it's working?
It's a low.
Okay, so students from the high school traveled to Westminster College for National History Day on March 4th. Both teams advanced to the state competition held in Scranton and that will be held in April. Back in February, Patterson had its annual jump-a-thon where students got to jump rope and play games. The elementary students were also joined by volunteers from our high school National Honor Society. Biz students enjoyed an amazing jungle terry animal assembly this week. And next week, the Penn State Master Gardeners will be presenting a mystery yak assembly to all first-grade students. This is to teach students to be cautious of substances that are poisonous for ingestion. So you guys have probably seen those little mystery yak stickers. Both Patterson and Biz will be collecting mac and cheese and cereal for our food drive for inspired hearts and hands. This group will be providing non-perishable food boxes to our families in our community in need. And this past Saturday, Biz hosted its father-daughter dance and Patterson had its glow dance. Both events were a success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Relations and Communications, Mrs. Klein?
Blackhawk is very proud of our students' achievements and we encourage the extracurricular activities that happen in each grade. Please visit each school's website for updates and happenings in our buildings, including holiday events and concerts. There was no one who had signed up to speak on any agenda items?
Mrs. Klein, is there a report for, from the PSBA tonight?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Huziak, do we have a report for the Beaver County Career and Technology Center?
Uh, no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mansell, do we have a report from the Beaver County Intermediate Unit?
No report.
Agenda item number seven, Approval of Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting on February 20th?
I'll take the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Mansell. A second? Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda item number eight, Finance. Mr. Shoup?
Okay. I do have a few things going on in finance here, and so since Erin is not here, I told her I would go through them even though she doesn't work up until night. The first one is that, like we mentioned in the last meeting, we did choose to invest a total of $6 million out of our fund into two CDs. The First National Bank, we broke it into two pieces, a three-month and a six-month, so that will maintain flexibility and still get as high rates, so we will be making $71,000 in the current fiscal year and another $20,000 at least in the next year. So that's good. Monthly bill payments, not too much interesting to talk about there. Standard financial report. Yeah, nothing significant there. 8.4 is the Patterson Township MOU with the Patterson Police SROs revising their daily rate to be retroactive to January 1st. 8.5 is Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit Budget Resolution. And then 8.6, we're we wanted to add the approval of USI Insurance Services as the district's broker of record to vote on in the next voting session. So... Here's my official statement here. Can I get a motion to add the finance consent items 8.2 to 8.6 to the agenda for the March 20th, 2025 voting session?
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Huziak. Any discussion on these items?
Those rates are what, 4.1?
Can't hear you.
Those rates are what, 4.1?
4.15 for the three-month and four for the six-month.
A legal question. I'm not sure of this answer. Are we allowed to invest in TIPS? You know what I'm talking about, like Treasury bills, these are inflation-protected for short-term.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you repeat your question? I couldn't hear it.
Are we, as a school district, or really any school district, are we allowed to invest in TIPS? These are Treasury bills. You can get them short-term, but why they're called TIPS is they have inflation protection on them in that you'll get a boost to, suppose a one-year rate is 3.85. You get, you get an inflation boost on top of that.
Off the top of my head, I'm unsure, but I can look into that for you and let you know.
All right.
If, um, if you look at Policy 609, we do have investment of district funds there, so it outlines which funds that school districts are permitted to invest in specifically. Erin and I spoke about this prior because it was a new one for me too, but one that business managers do and directors of finances will do this. It speaks in this about various guidelines, and I'm looking, I'm scanning the policy, Dr. McCosey, to see if TIPS are included. I don't think it is, so I may need to go to school code for that, which Kathy and I can research. But we do have a policy on it.
Stock transfer is risky for, aside from what's going on right now. It just, you don't tie up school funds and something like that. TIPS, you know, because it's, you can get them at shorter duration. That's why I'm asking that question. They're not much different than the CD.
Thank you for the question. Do we have any other discussion on these items?
If I could, the Patterson Township MOU, sometimes I think it gets a little confusing. We are required by the state to have an annual MOU with our police departments, but this is the police contract, not the renewal of it, but Patterson, interestingly enough, has verbiage in their contract, which expires next January. That says each year, the rates will be evaluated, instead of the rates just being set for the life of the contract. So that's why this was on here. But, um, you know, we will be looking, obviously, to renew, because both of those come up. Chip along Patterson, both do a phenomenal job. I couldn't ask for better SROs in relationships with our law enforcement, so just in case there was any question on that.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on the motion and the second to add the finance consent items 8.2 through 8.6 to the agenda for the March 20th? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We should also note that Mrs. Bluedorn isn't here this evening because she's at a professional development workshop. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we wish her the best as she's exploring that professional growth. Next up, we have Personnel with Mr. Huziak.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Personnel Committee Consent Items 9.1 and 9.2.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mansell. Do we have any discussion on the items 9.1 and 9.2? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number 10, Education. Mr. Mansel?
So it looks like the only thing we have on here is item 10.1, which is the cyber services renewal contract with the BVIU. I believe that should be it. And I don't think, since it's all one, we'll have to add that to the consent, actually, we didn't get that consented. Never mind. Brain cramp. May I have a motion to add the approval for the contract to the voting agenda for March 20th? I'll make the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion for, from Mr. Huziak. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Zakowitz. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to stay with Mr. Mansel for Student Supports Services. Thank you. Item number 12, Athletics and Activities. Typically, Mr. Wisner is our liaison, and he would talk a little bit about the athletic equipment to be scrapped. I think that's pretty self-explanatory, so at this time, would someone like to make a motion to add the approval of athletic equipment to be scrapped to the agenda for March 20th voting session? Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Shoup. Any discussion?
It says, uh, items are less than 500. Is that the scrap value or is that the value of the items?
The value of the items.
Okay.
And you want that glued ham thing? You can pick it up if you need it.
No.
It'll be out behind the school playground.
Park rack, I'd like to look at that.
Oh, it's like great, alright.
It'll fight you for it, right?
Huh?
It'll fight you for it.
Alright, that's fine.
Alright, before, before this gets any deeper.
I think I'll win that.
So, um, thank you for that discussion. I think we've wrapped that up, and let's have our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Zakowitz?
Agenda item 13.1, may I have a motion to add the approval of Patterson Primary PTO donation of playground benches and installation value at $3,098 to the agenda for March 20th?
Thank you, Mrs. Mansell. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mansel. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And thank you to the Patterson PTO. It's awesome. Okay, um, item number 14 is Policy. And before we begin this conversation, which can often be a little bit more lengthy than some of our other items for tonight, I just wanted to mention that we do have a couple of board members who will be stepping out to attend a chorus concert tonight, which is completely, completely fine. And we're just going to keep moving on with our agenda. So at this time, I am going to introduce Dr. Vanata to lead us through the policies that we're going to be looking at tonight.
Certainly. So, uh, as we continue our journey through, through policies, the employee policies are probably about as clear as mud. And what the intent of this was to consolidate. We have policies, employee, administrative employees, 300. We had employees, 300 general. We had, have 400, which is professional employees, and we have 500 classified. My recommendation would be to consolidate those. Sometimes when policies are spread out over four different sections, they can be missed. We definitely don't want to deviate from that or miss something on how we're guided with these policies. So you'll see through here that there's a lot of retirement. The majority of this is, is not very dense or deep. It's just, I feel like a lot of mess that we need to clean up. So if I can guide you through our memo, and as we usually do, we walk down through them. If we have questions on some of these, please interject at any time and ask, you know, what is, what's going on with that, and we'll look at these policies. So you have a handout in front of you, and we'll kind of start with that. So, um, unfortunately, I'm looking at my handout. It doesn't necessarily go in the same order of the, my table here. So let's start with duplicate policies to be combined, that they are reviewed and no modification. We don't have a packet for those because there's no modification. So you see in your table, your chart in front of you, 310 and 410 abolishing a position. Though those will be collapsed, two of 310 will just have one instead of two separate ones, but there's no modification to those. Same policy, we just have them in two different places.
Dr. Vanata, as you begin to go through the consolidation of the 300, 400, and 500s, could you identify the, the employee groups that this will cover?
Certainly.
Because before, I believed that they were their own categories.
They were. So once everything is said and done, my recommendation would be that we have one group for employees, so 300. So in our policies, we will have a 300 section. We will not have four different sections. There will just be one and it covers all of our employees. The majority of our policies are for all of our employees. We only have certain individual ones that are applicable to certain employees. I'll pick on myself. There is a superintendent evaluation superintendent contract policy. Obviously, it still needs to stay there, but it won't, that really won't change. So does that answer your question?
So most of the 300s would encompass administrative employees, professional employees, and classified employees.
Correct.
And if there is an exception to that, for example, the superintendent evaluation policy that you just mentioned, that policy would designate who particularly it is applied to.
Correct.
Thank you.
So that's exactly right.
Thank you. Certainly.
Any other questions on the focus or the table itself? All right, so, um, again, the next one, HIV infection. 314.1, 414.1, and 514.1. No, no modification at that time, just the consolidation. Unlawful harassment, same. We had it in three different sections. No modification at this time, just the consolidation. And then penalties for tardies. It was in two different sections. That would be consolidated to 2.1 for this. Another thing interesting that we looked at when we're looking at policies is we look to see which ones are legally required, which ones are, carry some liability, so we want to recommend that we have them, and which ones are mandated, you know, by the Department of Ed as well. Your notes are fun. That's before I realized. All right, so if we can, let's go into duplicate policies revisions. All right, so you should have the paper of that. Creating a position. This was combined and edited to bring verbiage into compliance with the consolidation. That was it. Most of these policies, simply, as you'll see, the previous one said administrative positions, while this one now says administrative personnel and support. So it captures everyone. That was the only, um, other than editing various administrative aspects, that was the only revision there.
In some of the policies, are, are we just on 301?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's okay?
Go ahead.
We have next. It's not the fire alarm, just in case anybody's wondering. No, no, it's another alarm. Bad, I can't see your face.
Do you know what that is, Matt?
Yeah, I do.
I shut it off.
Maybe you're walking out the door.
Oh, maybe. I don't know, it's not. Matt did it, and he fixed it as soon as I asked.
Yeah, I fixed it.
So 303 is the next one. Employment of administrators, consolidation, and a little bit of school code. We need to make sure that, uh, we have guidelines in there from school code with, there it is. Firmative votes for, to follow our nepotism policy, and also, um, any new employee or any employee, if they are arrested, have a legal requirement to notify the district that they have been arrested within 72 hours. So those were some new rules that came about.
And those rules are in, um, Policy 303, 404, 405 consolidation.
Correct.
And I believe that that policy refers to specific forms that an educator may have to complete should they receive any type of-
If they're arrested?
Correct.
If they are arrested. And those forms are online from the state, similar to your clearances and things such as that. There's a number to it and it's escaping me. I don't, I don't think it's 71, but, um, there's an act that requires that.
Thank you.
308, 408, and 508, employment contract. This was, this was pretty lofty, needed to be updated, just based upon, again, new aspects of code and board resolution there. Each employee, when they, when someone is hired in the district, they, they do sign, doc professional employees and administrative employees sign a contract. And then resolution, board resolution is mainly for hourly employees. 309, assignment and transfer, very minor. Updates there based upon contract guidelines and then just edits for consolidation. 311, um, around 2016, 17, oh, 17, 18, I was off a couple of years. The state redid their furlough guidelines. I call it reduction of staff, and it's pretty specific. So that changed the rules for that, so our policy needed to indicate the reasons why school districts could take that type of action, and that is outlined in this policy.
Dr. Vanata, within, um, those regulations that the state recommends, or I should say requires, there's a section in there that talks about employees who provide direct instruction and the, um, and the order in which those furloughs could take place. Could you explain a little bit about the part with administrators?
Sure. So where exactly are you looking? I think I'm in the right section, or is it here? So if the board chooses from this requirement, so if a district decides to furlough, help me out, Kathy, if I'm, if I'm a step on this one, that they also have to furlough a percentage of their administrative staff. So there are a lot of restrictions on furloughs these days, and if you're furloughing for this category, I believe it's economic, economic furloughs, then it- this category, I believe it's economic furloughs, then it couldn't just be teachers. So the state wants to make sure that everyone is included in that. So if the district is in such dire straits that they need to furlough, then everyone needs to be looked at. So a certain percentage would need to be administrative as well.
And that would be determined by the board.
That is determined by a percentage of how many are furloughed based upon this guideline. 313, evaluation of employees. Again, a consolidation here. Since this policy, we had Act 13. It used to be Act 82, then it went to Act 13, and that is evaluation of educators, educator effectiveness model. So those guidelines are outlined here, but also what is captured is all employees, professional and temporary professional aspects there. Conduct and disciplinary procedures. This, again, relatively minor, based upon the consolidation verbiage. We needed to add some verbiage as to discriminating behaviors against race, age, sexual orientation, also a breach of confidential information, and non-professional relationships with students. Also, the arrest and conviction reporting requirements from safe schools was added to this. Outside activities, around 319. This is due to verbiage with consolidation. That's it.
I think in 319, we just need to correct just a small typo under purpose. When we talk about evaluating administrators, but I think it might need to say evaluating employees.
Employees, yeah. This consolidation was dense, so I appreciate any assistance. I'm sure, I think I said to just some board members earlier, I'm sure I missed something. So we can always fix it. That's not a big deal, but if you please, don't hesitate to bring those out. So thank you. 320, free to a speech in school settings. Again, just simply due to consolidation. Same with political activities, 321, and same with gifts, 322. 324, simply personnel file difference. There was some verbiage added there. Dress and grooming, very minor verbiage regarding that, and then, of course, the consolidation Compensation plan. This had some more verbiage added to it based upon contracts, salary schedules, administrative, professional, and support employees. So that language for all three groups needed to be captured a little bit more clearly Also, granting of experience for professional staff was the last part that we added there.
Has that been a common practice by our district or a recommendation by PSBA or the state? And can you talk a little bit about how the impact of the teacher shortage has maybe influenced this policy?
Yes. So school code states that boards have the authority to place wherever they so choose. So however, we need to be mindful of this. Sometimes, most districts would offer half. That's a common practice of experience, or start at the very beginning. Teacher shortage makes that a little bit more difficult sometimes to find candidates that want to maybe transfer districts, but start all the way back at the beginning of the scale. So crediting up to five years is one that I am comfortable with. We have begun a practice of employing long-term subs in full capacity, so we have a year out where a teacher is out on a leave for a certain period of time. I am a huge fan and endorsement of that practice because, basically, that gives a teacher a year-long job interview, where we can then see their commitment and their fit and dedication to our educational programs. If that teacher then is hired on a contractual position, they start on that second step. So we give credit for that time. So there's some fluctuality in that, but anything over five years, I would go to the board to say, would you recommend giving more credit than this? Because I am not sure that's always the case. I would request that the board would ask me to explain why I was requesting more than that.
So the five years is a local agency decision.
It is a local agency decision.
And that might be something that we want to discuss as a board. Like, do we agree with that recommendation for that change in policy? Do we have any discussion or questions about that rationale for the five years flexibility that our administrators and Dr. Banata would have in making offers to teachers who are coming to the district?
So how does it work if... Maybe I missed what you were saying because I couldn't hear you, but...
Sorry.
If... Sorry. If you wanted to bring someone in at a higher level than that, then you can bring that to the board.
Correct.
Is that how it goes? So it's not like that can't happen.
Correct.
It's just that common practice would be a five-year max with special circumstances for a given level. That's what I'm saying.
Correct. So for those who may not be familiar, the teacher scales are 19 steps, 19 years that they get it. Most, you know, it's 1 to 19, or 19 to 1, depending on how we cut it. So the credit, that's why I was intentional. I didn't want to say five steps because someone may interpret that incorrectly with us. So years or steps is that the credit, the experience that we would credit them. And I want someone who really wants to be here. I think that we have many desirable qualities for teacher candidates. I think we have a healthy contract. We have a healthy district. So there's many reasons that they would want to come. So hopefully, if they have 10 years, they would concede. Okay, then I'll take five, knowing that the long game is more important than the short. If there's a situation where that doesn't work and we're in a bind, then I would come to you and say, our backs are against the wall, we're going to have to go higher than that. But I would have to have a lot of information and data based on that candidate to make that recommendation to you because there's a significant financial cost to that.
I do agree with giving Dr. Banata the flexibility of the five years and steps so that when she is doing some of the negotiating and speaking with the candidates in interviews, that she has the ability to commit to that if she sees that that's appropriate. And I think that will really help us to attract the very best talent to our district as well, which I think is important to all of us.
Thank you.
I also agree. I do wonder if there is any possibility with, given that flexibility? And if there's any legal potential or legal problem, maybe, Kathy, you could speak to this? If we offer some candidates credit for experience and not others, based on that area of certification? So for example, let's say we have a position where it's a highly sought-out certification, advanced statistics or something, where we have very few candidates, and we are trying to attract someone for that position, whereas we may have an elementary position with seven grade candidates, and we may not need to use that five years' credit of flexibility. Does that leave us open for any legal ramifications? Or is because it's in policy that it's flexible and up to the superintendent and administration that we're okay?
One, it's because it's in policy, right? That's very good. And two, as you just described, when you have, there's evidence, right? There's going to be, you know, for example, like science and math, I know right now are very difficult to find those sorts of teachers, so that, you know, it's that sort of evidence is easily accessible and well-known. And as you just pointed out, it's going to be a situation where you're going to have, like, one applicant, or, you know, you're trying to woo someone from somewhere, as opposed to having, you know, a dozen applicants for one position. So the situation itself is going to sort of prevent the legal concerns because that's why you're needing to do it in the first instance, so.
And is there anything in the BEA contract that we need to consider when changing or updating this policy with regards to hiring?
I don't think so.
Not that I... Well, there's... Yeah, not that I recall.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion or questions about this particular policy? Great conversation. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, moving on to 331. Again, just based upon the consolidation. The thing that I did, attendance at programs and actual expenses, functions outside shall be reimbursed. It did say in advance by the board. If an administrator or an employee goes to a conference in Allegheny County and they, you know, submit for mileage afterwards, there may be a time that that happens before the board meets again. I need to be able to say, okay, we'll reimburse for that mileage. Obviously, significant things come to board attention, but there will be incidents where the board doesn't have the advance notice to do that, so that's why that modification was changed there for those. This, again, goes to, we just went through strategic planning and some professional development, so this language, some of this language was changed based upon those plans. You'll see language in here such as six years, three years, 45 days. Those are all things that PDE says that you need to have these plans, and they need to be reapproved at this time. Trial-informed approach education, that was a new mandate that came out within the past eight years as well, to include that in there. As a state requirement to have that training so many hours each year. Sick leave. Again, this was consolidation. I did put some verbiage in there. We just had physicians' language. I wanted to make sure it was a licensed physician. So there are some stipulations based upon requiring sufficient proof of sick leave or needed for that. And then it was just the consolidation language. Family medical leaves. I think that was simply changing the title of that. There was nothing significant in that. That's straight from F and L A.
Quick question on 335, and then also the 334 prior to that, sick leave and family medical leaves. Is it possible that these two policies could be interpreted by different individuals differently? And if that's the case, and with approval of these policies, how do we foresee ensuring consistency with interpretation and management of those policies for our staff members to be working with?
I mean, that's a really great question. We need to make sure our practice and our policies are in line. And that's the beauty of me, you know, going through all of these and the board tasking me to do this. Because if we have had inconsistencies in the past, and we've had a lot of turnover, right? So how do we make sure that we are consistent in our practices and in our policies? And the best way to do that is for me to go through all of them with a fine-tooth comb to make sure I understand them, so then I can communicate those aspects in our benefits, you know, payroll, policies, all of our administrators, anyone who's implementing these policies, to make sure those practices are in place. I think you saw the last section of policies, attendance with our students. I made the conversation, and I said, we've done this. This is what we do. Our policy just didn't state it. Well, with this, it's eyes on it now to make sure, okay, we need to make sure we do these things and make sure we're following them as much as we can and put those plans in place.
And again, upon approval of these policies specifically for our employees, do you foresee having some opportunities to meet with the leaders of the collective bargaining units to make sure that we have collective understood practices and procedures that follow those guidelines?
I do. That's, again, I told you before, I love a handbook. That's the beauty of the handbooks. I've met with the administrative team as well, so make sure you add this policy to it, or make sure that we add this with faculty handbooks as well as, obviously, student handbooks. And we can make sure that we review that. Sometimes they have questions. We meet fairly regularly, not as an administrative group, but also, you know, with union leadership. And if there are questions, we go back, we look at them, and we iron them out. And as always, if we need to review, then we'll review, revisit, and I'll bring it back to you.
It also might be helpful after, again, upon approval of the 300s, that those faculty handbooks are reviewed to align with the most current policies. That's great. Thank you. Any other discussion on the 334, 335 with the board? Thank you.
Okay, 337, vacation. Simply consolidation on that, and then eligible employees are just verbiage into how they may be able to take those and which ones are applicable. Sabbatical. Again, just, this was pretty minor. Just the professional consolidation here on that one. So administrative and professional. Not everybody is entitled to sabbatical, so that's why it doesn't say all employees were professional, administrative, and support. Compensated professional leaves. Again, administrative and professional there. And then uncompensated as well. Nothing too much in that one, other than just the title modification. Jury duty. This was consolidated, so just consolidated language. Drug and substance abuse, guidelines there. Again, that form, if anyone was arrested within 72 hours, they have to relinquish and report that information to the district. Employment of substitute employees. Pretty minor verbiage there. Working periods. This was a consolidation, and then just some entry of those periods based upon the consolidation to make sure it captures all employees following the school calendar, things such as that. And that took so long, my computer logged out, and I have to look back to see where we are with it on the table. 336, duplicate and retirement. So there's the personal necessity leave was a duplicate policy that I would recommend retirement. With the various leaves that we just went through, this isn't necessary, nor is it recommended by PSBA that we have it, so I don't see the purpose in this policy. Then moving on to standalone policies that were reviewed, no modification. Tobacco and vaping, responsibility of student welfare, employment of summer school staff, and overtime. Those were standalone policies. You can see that, you know, they've ranged from professional to classified employees based upon it. So they were reviewed, they will be collapsed, the numbers will change, but there's no other modification needed at that time. So stand... Any questions on that? I'm sorry. Some standalone revisions. There's a handful of policies that had some revisions, the employment of the superintendent, Various terms that changed. Various terms that changed in school code. If the board chooses not to renew a contract, those days change. It used to be one fifty, it's now ninety.
So that change of those days, that is specific to school code. It's not something that we are changing, correct?
Correct.
That is a significant difference.
So it used to be, one hundred, it used to be that most districts had to notify, you know, it was a year notice. And then it went to one hundred and fifty. And then now it's ninety. So if the board, we are in the employment of superintendent. 302.
Three twelve?
302.
Oh, 302.
It speaks about filling the position if there's a vacancy as well. Just to give the board the authority to do that when and if that time would ever occur. And then there are aspects in there about the terms and conditions of employment. That, and you can see that there are some, there's some guidance in there. This is straight from school code. Years ago, I don't know, probably those ten to fifteen years ago, I remember that the state came down and said, we're gonna put some code in about superintendent contracts as to what can be included in them and not. And that's when they modified days and put some provisions about what can be included and what cannot be included in those contracts. So that's just keeping us up to date with that. Conflict of interest slash nepotism. Very, very limited there, just, we don't have an office of human resources. So superintendent or designate. Evaluation of superintendent, again, this also changed. The evaluation is not only indicated in the superintendent's contract, but it has the authority here as to what can be evaluated. And this is straight from school code as well. Remember, it's can, it doesn't mean that that's what's in there, but these are some of the guidelines in school code that says can, that can be in there. It also talks about the evaluation, having that written out on the website and those aspects. Physical examination for employees. There was some older language in here. So this was sort of a refleshing. Sometimes when you're looking at some of these consolidations and some of these policies, I wanted to make sure that I captured it correctly so not to miss anything, just a complete refresh sometimes was a little easier to do. All candidates, any employee of districts have to go through physical things, T V tests and things such as that. Student teachers and interns. Again, arrests and conviction reporting requirements, also the health, physical aspects and recommendations of cooperating teachers. Health examination, those things were, were included in there as well. And almost lastly, benefits for part-time employees, small blurb in there. Again, just captures everyone. And paid holidays captures everyone within there as well. Not all employees receive paid holidays, but if they do, it's in accordance to their agreement or collective bargaining agreement. Workers' compensation. There were a couple items I wanted to make sure we included in here to make sure our policy was thorough, indicating having been injured at work and is being paid. Those compensation disability benefits, those were the only two aspects there. For clarification, any questions on those? All right. So in the home stretch, we have some out of order, which meaning that they're not in the 300 groups. So because our, let's go back to the zero, zero, zero. These are your board policies about procedure and administrative regulations. It talks about how our policies are organized. If we are going to consolidate these policies, then we need to indicate as such in this policy. So that, which is the reason why the items were struck. I am looking at zero, zero, zero. Did I go out? We're gonna, we were gonna get to that if I went out. I'm sorry, my packet, I was just going by my packet, so. We are moving to 103. 103, we have the discrimination Title IX sexual harassment affecting students. If you recall, this policy was not addressed when we did the 100s because of a pending suit. So we have since received guidance on this. There was very little modification. Pregnancy was added to this, a couple may haves. I believe the state decided they didn't like police. They preferred law enforcement as verbiage, which is fine. The forms change, so those will be updated in our policies as well. And the title of this designated district report form instead of the other form that it was called.
In, on one of the pages where there's a may have in red, the has been was not struck through, so I, I can't.
Oh, I see.
Okay, thank you.
There may have and the has been should have been. Thank you.
And then under the definition section, there are some definitions of different things that are included in that policy, pregnancy being one. It, it's, the wording is a little clunky there and I think we just need to identify that that's the definition of pregnancy to be used in the rest of the policy.
Okay, so your recommendation would be to add that verbiage. This is the definition that will be used throughout the rest of the policy?
It does say that.
This is shall be, right? And then this is.
Oh, I see. It's not consistent. Shall mean.
Yeah, just for.
Consistency.
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Got it. Sure. Okay, then 104 is the same affecting staff. So again, we have various additions within here. Pregnancy being the main one aspect to it. And then, of course, that process, the complaint process is outlined. I'm looking at definitions as well. I will make that note on this one, too.
And again, just a follow-up question regarding policies that do have reporting forms. Those will all be identified in the, in the district office and then online, is that correct?
Yes, they are online. There is attachments. Forms don't necessarily need board approval to be updated because sometimes they may change more frequently. So we update those as they, as they come. But there were recommended forms that came with these policies that we will update once the board goes through the approval process. Okay, and then new policies, educator misconduct. This was a new policy that is highly recommended for various reasons, legal aspects as well, that talk about what educator misconduct is. A newer aspect that came about probably in the 2015s area and what identifies that. If we think an employee has violated this such policy, then there are very specific and strict guidelines that we have to follow for this. And that is code as well. Any questions on this one, since it's a new one? And then lastly, complaint process. We didn't have a complaint process. And I believe that our solicitor can attest that we have to have a process and our employees need to know what that process is. So there we go. And those are the 300s. Any, and other 300s and 400s, 500s? Very good. This, this one was spinning. I, I'll be happy when it's, this one was, this one was a fun one.
For the recommend, recommendation for retired policies, were those all just because of duplication? Or is there any that we needed to have any discussion on?
So the, the non-tenured employees, thank you for bringing those up. These were all, most likely all because of duplication. It, it should be noted in the side there, you can see non-tenured employees. That was covered in the evaluation of employees through Act 13 as well as a duplicate. So that's rationale for both. It was duplicate, but also it, it is no longer relevant to have that because when it was written, we didn't have Act 13. Non-tenured staff members, same. It talks about Act 13. All of the others were mainly through duplicates.
Can you talk a little bit about 327, what that was and why we don't cover the new policy for that anymore?
Certainly. So 327 is a procedural policy. It talked about having a management team. I just, I don't, I don't think, it's, it is, it's an opinionated policy. I'm sure maybe at one time that was, that was important to have. But we, we have that. That's, we have our administrators and we, we work together as a team there. I'm not, I'm not too sure of the relevance of that, of that policy. It's not required. It doesn't really have any legal boundaries for it. It's a procedural aspect.
So nothing's changing as far as what things will take place? It's just?
No, I mean, I mean, that's based upon the leadership and superintendent's preference. And they, I'm sure the administrators can tell you, we, we meet regularly and discuss. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Banata. I know that that took quite some time to consolidate those policies and we really do appreciate all of your, your hard work and efforts there. So we have moved through 14.2, 14.3, 14.4, 14.5 and 14.6 based on the edits and revisions that will happen based on our discussion tonight. Do we have a motion to approve the first reads of policy items 14.3 and 14.4 and to move policy items 14.2 and 14.5 to the agenda for the March 20th, 2025 voting session?
I got a question for Dr. Banata, just reading through all this with a theoretical question. Let's suppose you find a particular subject in which we don't have enough, maybe only five students want to take a particular class.
Can I interrupt you just for one second?
Go ahead.
So we're, we're, we're gonna have some discussion time in just a minute, but right now we're just looking for the motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Zachowicz. And now, do we have any discussion or questions?
That's why it's, I suppose you get a situation where, all right, you only have next year, I'll use Latin because it's already eliminated, I think.
We can't hear what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Suppose you only have five students who want to take Latin next year. My problem with this policy is, okay, if you reduce that teacher because we don't have enough interest in that particular class, should the administration take a hit, too?
Which policy?
Uh, let me see this. Economic suspension requirements.
So furloughs and suspension?
Yeah.
So furloughs and suspensions. So there are certain reasons that one can furlough, that a district can furlough. So which reason are we choosing?
Well, well, look, look, from, like I said, my original question is, I wanted to frame it like this. Suppose you only have five students who want to take Latin, so you decide to eliminate Latin next year. Okay, if I'm reading this right, it seems to state, okay, you have, if you eliminate the Latin teacher, you have to eliminate the same percentage in the administration. I mean, to me, it seems kinda.
Well, furlough is different than just moving teachers around to different positions, so.
I, I didn't ask move. I'm just saying suppose she eliminated Latin.
So you're talking about program elimination?
Yeah.
Okay, so within program elimination, so what I would need to do then is I would have to go to the school code for program elimination and I have to follow that guideline specifically. And, let me take me a second. What number, what number is it? 311? 311. So if we go through.
Yes, 311.
So generally, you're eliminating for economic reasons.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, my question is, does the administration have to take a hit?
Then I'm not allowed to do it.
Okay.
So declining enrollment, that's an example. Economic, that's an example. So the school code was changed to really put provisions around school districts so they can't arbitrarily furlough. So there needs to be a very specific reason to do so. Economic, when you hear about furloughs, most common anymore, it's due to economic reasons. And then you have to follow this guideline. You also have to notify within a certain time. You have to get approval from the state to do so. Program elimination, you can eliminate a program. That doesn't necessarily follow here, but then what are you going to do? If you eliminate it, then that teacher goes and then this policy comes into place and you have to follow the guidelines there. Program isn't popping up to me on this, so I would have to do a little bit of research as to how that, that would go. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Sorta, kinda?
Yeah.
You know, I can, again, I can look at the, the program aspect. I'm hoping that we wouldn't be in that situation where we want to eliminate a program, but if, if a program dies out. If it does, you know, if it dies out, then I would hope that through attrition, you know, and through appropriate and savvy staffing, that we would move things around that way. Attrition is always a little bit more friendly way to address these things, these opportunities.
Any other discussion or questions on the policy items? So we, we do have a motion on the floor to move these items for a first read and for a vote on the 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item 16, additional business. Would we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on any non-agenda items this evening?
Mark Brown from Chippewa. On policy 328, where you're talking about giving people steps to come here. I understand that, I understand what you're saying about maybe you would be able to find someone or that would entice someone more or less to come here. Think it would be a little bit more fair if you just wrote the policy to say you have the flexibility to offer anyone up to five steps. Not, not make it so, it shouldn't be specific. You sat here and talked tonight about it being specific if you couldn't get an advanced, I think statistics is what you used, teacher. But it should be, it should be not related to your subject matter.
Mrs. Brown, the, I think we're looking at it backwards. Five steps, up to five is a, is a general thing.
So that's good for K to 12.
See, it's K, it's general, that, and that's not an uncommon. Our teachers probably come in anywhere between two. I'm gonna make a wager.
Our teachers come in on step one. Or, I'm sorry, step 19 in this now, isn't that right, Ryan? New hires come in on step, the lowest step. That's been policy in this district, whether written or unwritten, for probably. That's been policy in this district, whether written or unwritten, for probably the whole eighteen years I've been standing at, sitting at school board meetings. So to change that now, you should make, probably make some specific wording to make sure that everyone understands that applies to everyone. That applies to everyone, K to twelve, not just because it's a hard subject to get.
A hard subject would be over five. The board has to approve that.
Is this the free slope? Is this the free slope?
But that would, it would always be that way.
Okay. And then policy one oh three, where it talks about sexual harassment under Title IX. Sexual harassment is not limited to Title IX activities. That could be anywhere. So I was wondering if that shouldn't be explicitly added to the list, because it says sexual harassment, and then it's specifically written with Title IX. That can happen outside of Title IX. I don't think it should be limited to only Title IX. That's probably not.
I think that's why it's also included in unlawful harassment.
Say that again?
It's an unlawful harassment as well.
Yeah, but I think sexual harassment is included as its own thing almost everywhere else, so I, I don't, I thought it should be included there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sorry. So I just want to revisit three twenty-eight to make sure that we understand the concern that we've heard here, and how this changes maybe what we've done in the past. So it, it reads, the superintendent is authorized to credit past experience, experience up to five step, years slash steps on the professional salary scale the candidate would determine in salary scale. Any further experience shall require board approval. So how does that change what we've been doing, what you said, for how many years?
We, everyone comes on the lowest step. No one gets a step, and with rare exceptions that are, I think that there, we've already had issues with.
So there are situations that I just spoke to regarding long-term subs. If a teacher served in a long-term sub-capacity here, that was, they, it was.
That's how it's always been.
Thank you.
I was a long-term sub.
So if they served as the whole year, as a long-term sub, when they end, if the following, if the position becomes a contracted position and not a substitute position, and they are, they win the position through interview process and recommendation, it is appropriate to hire them on step two. They've already been here a year on step one. To put them on one again, I don't, I've never heard of that practice. So I'm simply saying that they're up to so many years, if someone comes in with experience six years in another district. I can't offer them six years. I'm not allowed to do that. I'm restricting, this policy is restricting me. I can't say that you can have ten years. I can't put them on whatever step I want. That, only five, that's all, that's all that I get. You can make it, it can be one, but I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go as low as I can. But if somebody comes in with ten years, I'm gonna probably offer them four, knowing that I can only go to five to try, if they are a worthy candidate, because they're at ten, and if I say one, they're not coming here. You gotta give credit for something. So generally, most district practice that I've experienced, and it's only been a few, but it was half, you'd give half. So if they have four years of experience, two. If we have a history of one, then the board can choose that, but that's fine. But I'm pretty certain that I've given credit for a long-term sub-capacity to bring someone on, on two. Again, we didn't have any policy for this, so I was trying to put some type of guidelines around it to protect the district from inconsistent practices. That, that was the goal for this.
That's, there's a miscommunication. As a long-term sub, I, I was a long-term sub here for many times, so many times that when I got hired, I was hired on step two, because I was in this district for that year of service. What you're talking about is someone who hasn't been in this district. Not the long-term sub part, but offering someone who maybe taught ten years, you said they didn't teach ten years here, they taught ten years somewhere else, and then come to this district, and you want to offer them steps to come here. That's where we've always started them at the lowest pay. I'm not saying that's right. I'm not saying that's fair. I'm not saying that gets you the best candidate, because I know that it doesn't. I'm just trying to save you some headache later.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I understand the long-term sub thing better than most. I was a long-term sub here forever.
And I think that that's one of the reasons that we did want to have this discussion with the board, because it, it may be a change in practice, and and I think, given the fact that it is so hard to find really good, quality, distinguished teachers now, and that is, that is very different than it's been in years past, and, and thinking about that teacher shortage and that pipeline, and really wanting to attract great candidates here, I think this does give our administration some flexibility to offer them some of the steps that they had, and it may make the offer more attractive. Not always, but it, it might. So I agree with, with moving forward with the, with the five-year flexibility for administration. And I think we've given enough discussion to this for, for tonight, and then we'll have the vote next week.
That sounds good.
Okay.
If I could, I mean, can you think of any ripple effects, or, again, the intent was to safeguard not to open a can of worms? Is there any, anything that you could think of?
I think it's protective.
We can't hear you.
I think it's protective, not the reverse. I mean, I, I see it as being a good policy to have, not making there more concerns.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Sixteen point two, school directors. Would anyone else from the board like to make any comments or have any questions for tonight? Seventeen point one is an announcement for our meeting, which will be next Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M. I do believe that there is a typo on the, on our agenda.
On the, on the website.
I'm sorry.
We are at six.
We will stick with this.
I think we're just.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And, but there will not be an executive session after next week's meeting that we had originally anticipated. Okay, so next week's meeting on March twentieth is at six P M., but there is no executive session following it as we had discussed. Thank you. At this time, do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I make motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shope. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Zachowitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Have a great evening, Blackwell.